Follow me, Norah, start with the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In vocation, my first United Methodist. No room for not here? Roll call, please.
Sabers.
Here.
Goldammer.
Here.
Dosher.
Here.
McCardle. Barrington.
Here.
Baske.
Here.
Charks. Here. Smith.
Here.
Yeah, Mrs. Charks is joining us by phone, so all of our votes tonight will have to be by roll call. Approval consent agenda items, items appearing on consent agenda may be removed by council member for discussion at the beginning of the formal agenda items. Is there anything you wish to remove?
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Goldammer.
Second.
Second by Mr. Barrington. Discussion. Anybody in the audience wish to address any items on the consent agenda? Okay, roll call, please.
Dosher. McCardle.
Aye.
Barrington.
Aye.
Baske.
Aye.
Charks.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Sabers.
Aye.
Goldammer.
Aye.
Motion carries. Citizens input, if you need to address the mayor, members of city council on an item that is not on the agenda, excluding personnel items, please come forward to reporting, state your name and your concern. Presentations are limited to three minutes. Items will be considered, but no action will be taken at this time. Does anybody wish to address council?
Hold the microphone.
Okay, my name is Stuart Hanson. I just want to say I'm not against cleaning the lake. I'm just trying to save this city of millions of dollars and the taxpayers. First off, I want to apologize for reading from my notes, but I don't want to forget anything. It should be noted that I am not a member of the Good Old Boys Club. The reason for speaking tonight...
Is on the agenda? Well, it is on the agenda, yeah. Well, it's actually an amendment to the...
Stop the clock.
It, it, we're, the amendment to the last vote is on the... For the vote. Right, nothing else with the late. Referring to the late. Right. It is referring to the late. Justice?
I guess that, that's a council decision on whether you feel it belongs here or belongs on the specific agenda item.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, it should be noted that I am not a member of the Good Old Boys Club. The reason for speaking tonight is because I feel the need to respond to the mayor's four pages of why dredging. That was in the July 29th edition of the Mitchell Republic. First off, why is the mayor so gung ho on dredging the lake? It makes me wonder if he gets a finder's fee or a commission or something if the dredging vote passes. There was an alternate way to clean up the lake presented in 2021, but the mayor kept that a secret. People said they wanted the lake cleaned up, but they didn't say how. First, the mayor said that the alternate method was more expensive than the recent dredging cost. That was a lie. Then he backtracked and said it was more expensive than the 2021 dredging estimate. That was still a lie. When the mayor decided to keep this information a secret, all he did was divide this community, some for dredging and others against. And since he kept it a secret, the only choice he gave voters was either dredge or do nothing. If the mayor would have just done his job in 2021 and presented another option for cleaning the lake to the voters, we'd have two options to choose from. A second option that would have cost $1.1 million per year over a 10-year span for a total of $11 million. And contrary to what the mayor said, operating and maintenance costs were included. That means no loan, no interest payments, we wouldn't have to drain the lake, we wouldn't have any dead fish, no smell, no flies. And unlike the dredging estimate, it included 10 years of biological treatments. With the dredging estimate, 10 years of alum, alum treatments adds another $5 million to the dredging estimate. The mayor mentioned that aeration was brought up that could cause later or larger issues and liabilities if undesirable reactions occur and found their way to the Gulf of Mexico. What about the polluted nasty water he plans on sending downstream to the Gulf of Mexico? The fact that the mayor is doing interviews and coming out with letters from the mayor's desk tells me he's scared that people are realizing that dredging is way too expensive and the other option is better. And by the way, the mayor has never said the option to clean the lake wouldn't work, just that it costs more than dredging, which is a lie. Why does the mayor keep lying about the cost of dredging? He says it's only $13 million. Does he think we're all stupid? Once you figure in all the stuff that needs to be done in order to dredge, it's $25 million. And that doesn't include the 15 million for alum treatments and interest for a total of $53 million. Why does the mayor feel the need to play these numbers games? By the way, the alternate way to clean the lake has to do with aeration and beneficial bacteria that eats blue green algae. Basically, basically, it's the same process that wastewater treatment plants use to treat their wastewater before it's released into rivers and lakes. If we would have been given this option two years ago and approved, we'd be well on our way to a cleaner lake. And contrary to what the mayor says, it does come with a guarantee. Mitchell doesn't need a mayor like you, one that only cares about himself and the good old boys. We need a mayor that tries to work with all the community members. And on a side note, I had a bottle of water. This was taken from the West Den at the public...
That's your time. Thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else wish to address council?
I got one quick thing on, uh, I'd like to thank, oops. I'd like to thank Jeff Croll for coming out to the baseball game last night with the helicopter and drying the infield off in about half the time it would have taken to normally do it, otherwise they wouldn't have ever got their games in, so. Thanks, Jeff.
Hi, I'm Sonya Vanderwijk, Mitchell Township. Today I wanted to give you an update on the South Dakota canvassing, which is a volunteer organization working for free, fair, transparent, and secure elections now and for the future. This update has to do with the widespread evidence of election fraud that many of you probably don't know about. And it all came about since the 2020 election where these volunteers went out and canvassed all the vote in South Dakota. South Dakota counties use the ESNS tabulators for their elections. And in fact, the Davison County Commissioners just passed 4 to 2 to renew this contract, even after South Dakota canvassing and citizens of Davison County gave them information, even spoke at the meeting this past July. Why would a contract be renewed when there is widespread election fraud throughout the country with this machine? In addition to that, the previous Secretary of State did not tell the auditors that they have cast vote records, which is the ballot that's been scanned in and also the ability to get an audit report. There's four specific counties, Davison Counties being one of them, that actually has the election where that they can decode that. And decoding it means that they can have a spreadsheet on how the votes were, how the votes were cast before they were uploaded via the internet, because there can be algorithms to change it. So unfortunately, they've had these same machines since 2005 and they haven't known that they had this capability. So the question you have to ask is, why haven't we been told that? So anyway, so 66 counties have filed these requests for public information and have all been denied. The cast vote records, like I explained what they do, they can also, you can see where the IP addresses are, what's been happening with the log. Davison County is one of those counties that has that election where. And so our own auditor wasn't even told that we have this capability. That's pretty scary. Unfortunately, now, South Dakota canvassing has filed an appeal with the Board of Hearing Examiners regarding the denial of these cast vote records and audit logs from the ESNS tabulators. The denials prevent the public the right to view the audit trail for their elections. Pennington, Davison, Lincoln, and many Haha Counties are named in the appeal, and the counties have until September 15th to respond to the 508-page appeal that lays out exactly how all these record requests have been unlawfully denied. Now, why is this important? Because if we don't have secure elections, we don't have a republic. And I, we have, I have nothing wrong with the Davison County auditor or how they're running the elections. I've seen how they've done it. I've been a poll watcher and I've watched the whole system, how it works. But the problem is the machines. And so they haven't been given the information that's correct, and so then they renewed this contract. And just so you know, you can go to a certain county in Wisconsin and you can view the cast vote record online. So for them to say that this is proprietary means that they said that there's something there that can denote who voted. Well, we all know when we go to vote on our ballot, it doesn't designate who we are. So this is the misinformation that's going around. If you want more information, please go to southdakodacanvassing.com.
That's your time.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to address council? Okay. Oh, sorry, Doug.
Thank you, Mayor. Doug Greenway, Corn Palace. I just want to get a shout out to the public that are listening here tonight. Corn Palace Festival, August 23rd to the 27th. I left a poster with each of you council members. If you have a place to put that up and promote, we would appreciate it. We've got, we've got two excellent concerts. The Rock of Ages is a Broadway show. Never been in South Dakota before, so this is your one chance to see them. Michael Ray has just made one performance in South Dakota. So these are artists that are, that are pretty new to the area, and we think they're great shows. It's a $25 ticket. So we encourage the public to come out, come down to Midway, see the expanded vendor show, and of course, lots of free entertainment in the plaza. Thank you.
Thank you.
Doug, one, one quick thing. People are asking about the eighties concerts, so what I've been telling them, it's a lot like Hairball, that that was just kind of their costumes and the band or the type of music.
It, that would be the type of music, but, um, so The Rock of Ages was a Broadway show for about 10 years in New York. This is the actual band and singers from the show. So it's not a tribute band. It is the actual band. So where Hairball is more of a tribute band, this is the actual band, but they're playing the cover song from The Rock of Ages musical. Probably a higher-end singer, higher-end musician than Hairball, and probably a little less smoke and lights, is what we understand. Yep. And I should mention, the All You Can Ride wristbands are on sale now at the Corn Palace box office. So there's a substantial discount to buy those before the first day of festival. And we can, the box office is open nine to four, Monday through Friday. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else wish to address council? Okay. Board of Adjustment, entertain a motion to city council recesses, board of adjustment.
I'll move.
Mr. Barrington, second by Mr. McCardle, discussion. All those favor the motion, six, five, oop, roll call, please.
Barrington.
Aye.
Baske.
Aye.
Charks.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Sabers.
Aye.
Goldammer.
Aye.
Dosher. McCardle.
Motion carries. Hearing and action on the application of Latrice Franklin, conditional use permit. Latrice Franklin has applied for conditional use permit to operate a family residential daycare located at 1522 Pebble Beach Road. Legally described as Lot 27, Block 4, Lakeview First Edition. City Mitchell, Davis County, South Dakota, said property is owned R2, single family. Mr. Janikas.
Mr. Mayor, Council, planning commission recommended approval of this, 7-0 with the three normal conditions placed on daycares. We did have three letters returned in favor, one opposed. The one opposed verbally said that they were concerned about the noise and traffic that would be brought in the area for a daycare. Planning Commission didn't have any issues or concerns with it at all. Can I answer any further questions you may have?
Move to approve the conditions. Motion by Mr. McCardle, second by Mr. Sabers. Further discussion?
I have a quick question, Mark. When you, when they apply for a daycare, do you do a search for convicted felons or sexual predators? So if you put that there and somebody lives there, we're forcing them to move.
No, because this is a home residential daycare. It is not a, um, a business dick. I shouldn't say business, because this is a business, but it's not a MB or somebody like that. Those are two different.
Anybody else have any questions? Anybody in the audience wish to address this? Roll call, please.
Charks.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Sabers.
Aye.
Goldammer.
Aye.
Dosher. McCardle.
Aye.
Barrington.
Aye.
Baske.
Aye.
Motion carries. Hearing and action on the application of Bobby Spurlock, conditional use permit. Bobby Spurlock has applied for a conditional use permit to operate a family residential daycare located at 2040 West 23rd Avenue, legally described as east 100 feet of Lot B of the southeast quarter, Section 8, Township 103 North Range, 60 west of the 5th primary, in Davis County, South Dakota, said property is owned R4, high density. Mr. Janikas.
Mr. Mayor, Council, planning commission recommended approval of this, 6-0 with one abstention. There were no letters returned from any of the surrounding neighbors. This is just outside city limits, but still within the zoning jurisdiction. She actually has a existing daycare right now. It's just moving to a new location. She's been operating for about 15 years. I can answer any questions you may have.
Move to approve the conditions. Motion by Mr. Smith.
Second.
Second by Mr. Barrington. Further discussion? Anybody in the audience wish to address this? Roll call, please.
Sabers.
Aye.
Goldammer.
Aye.
Dosher. McCardle.
Aye.
Barrington.
Aye.
Baske.
Aye.
Charks.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Motion carries. Hearing and ac, action on the application of CJG Properties LLC variance permit. CJG Properties LLC has applied for variance permit for an accessory building in the front yard, in front yard setback of six feet versus 25 feet, located at 1821 West 8th. Legally described as Lots 5 and 6, Block 3, Home Park Original Edition. Davis County, South Dakota, said property, property is owned R4, high density. Mr. Janikas.
Mr. Mayor, Council, planning commission motion to recommend approval, but it was 0-7, so the motion failed. There was one letter returned in favor. For that meeting, I received an email after the fact from the county stating they did not approve of this setback as well due to the road possibly being redone in the future, and they thought it was too close. Applicant has a shed there right now, put concrete underneath it, so it's a permanent structure, will be a permanent structure. He chose that location because drain field is to the south of the house. He wasn't sure where exactly that is. And also for ease of right next to the house for a garage. I can answer any questions you have. The applicant is also here if you have any questions for him at all.
Can you talk to us about the discussion at the planning commission, please?
They just felt that there was other locations that were better on the property for where they should be. They know that there's been a lot of issues in Home Park Edition in the past, and they felt that it's time to start cleaning up the issues in Home Park Edition. They just felt that there was a different location better suited for that structure.
I'm curious if the owner wants to come up and plead his case.
Basically, that whole property there in the backside, there's, there's two sector tanks back there, an old one and then the newer one. And then I have no idea where the drain field goes, and that's why I sat there. At the time, I, you know, it was in, it's in county, forget about the rules about city with the one mile variance or controlling the codes. And, and so I didn't, I had to sit in there for two years, and then I moved in October of '21, and then it was starting to bulge over, so I picked it up and put some footings on it, and then I found out that it's not where I can have it. So, um, kind of asking for forgiveness, otherwise I'll have to move it out of there. But on the backside of the property, I don't know where the drain fields are, so.
All right, what's council wish to do?
With the county voting, though, is, is our vote even pertinent?
No, that was not a county vote. That was just an email from planning and zoning, sorry. That was not a, a vote from the county. It was just planning and zoning stating that they were not in favor of this setback, for this variance.
This does not have to go to county, correct?
Correct. This is all city's jurisdiction. The only time it would be with county in the ETJ is if there's a plating portion of it, and there's no plaque going with this.
Make a motion to approve. Motion by Mr. Sabers.
Second.
Second by Mr. Goldammer. Okay, roll call, please. Well, hold on. Further discussion? Anybody in the audience wish to address this? Okay, roll call, please.
Dosher. McCardle.
Aye.
Barrington.
Aye.
Baske.
Aye.
Charks.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Sabers.
Aye.
Goldammer.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Action to set the date for board of adjustment hearing, 8/21/23. Rodney and Marty Diner has applied for a variance permit for a side yard corner setback of eight inches versus 20 feet to rebuild a garage in the same place that was struck by a vehicle and had been demolished, located at 401 South Wisconsin. Legally described as Lot 1, Block 20, railroad addition, City Mitchell, Davis County, South Dakota. Said property is owned R2, single family. Need a motion to set the date.
Set the date.
Motion by Mr. McCardle. Second by Mr. Barrington. Further discussion? Okay, roll call.
Barrington.
Aye.
Baske.
Aye.
Charks.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Sabers.
Aye.
Goldammer.
Aye.
Dosher. McCardle.
Aye.
Motion carries. Action to set the date for board of adjustment hearing, 8/21/23. Bradley Bowers applied for conditional use permit to operate a home occupation gun repair shop located at 189 South Harmon Drive, legally described as Lot 95, Indian Head Edition. City Mitchell, Davis County, South Dakota, said property is owned RL Lake District.
Set the date.
Motion by Mr. McCardle. Second by Mr. Goldammer. Further discussion? Anybody in the audience wish to address this? Roll call.
Charks.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Sabers.
Aye.
Goldammer.
Aye.
Dosher. McCardle. Barrington.
Aye.
Baske.
Aye.
Motion carries. Entertain a motion for the board of adjustment to adjourn the city council reconvening regular session.
I'll move.
Motion by Mr. Barrington.
Second.
Second by Mr. Goldammer. All those, roll call, please.
Sabers.
Aye.
Goldammer.
Aye.
Dosher. McCardle.
Aye.
Barrington.
Aye.
Baske.
Aye.
Charks.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Motion carries. Award bid for golf course improvement rebid project, 2023-2R. Mr. Schrader.
Yep, Mr. Mayor, Council. Bid award for the golf course improvement project was on August 1st, 2023, in City Hall Council chambers at 3:00 PM. One bid was received by Dunick Inc. Base bid was $680,300. You can see the alternates listed there, and the bid tab is attached for your information. Staff does recommend awarding base bid and alternative one for a total bid amount of $670,300. We are requesting an additional $180,000 during the 2024 budget to bring the project within budget and provide a 10% contingency. And with that, I can answer any questions.
I'd like to start it off a little bit. We approve phase one. Phase one is just a prep for phase two. And when we get to phase two here, what it's going to do is rebuild Levin Green, replace a whole hall, take 12 out. It'll make, it'll make Levin lot safer. People take a driver up and over the trees. Blind shot on Levin. It goes over by 12 tee box. It'll, it'll take that out of play. 12 is an uphill par three. It's, in all the golf courses I've ever played, I've never seen an uphill par three I like. So it's, downhill ones are gorgeous, but it takes that out of play. And then it'll build a new par three over by, over by 15 pond. It'll take the dog leg on 15 pond. It'll take the dog leg on 15 pond, straighten it out into a swale. You know, it'll take the sharp 90 out and put it at a 33 degree angle. It's going to take, we have nine old holes and, and nine new holes. So it's going to take two of the old holes and, and make them into new holes. So we're, I mean, it's progress, it's keeping up times. It'll add new, new grass, new, new, uh, new irrigation to them parts, which is, you know, that they're coming do. So whenever they, they do part of it, irrigation will be there. Stuff, stuff the golf course has done, given to the city through the past is a few of the major ones is when they, when the houses south of the Lakeview have come up for sale, Kevin Thurman bought the 10 acres before it went up for sale, or we wouldn't have a driving range. He bought it out of the golf course funds, donate the city and built, building the driving range is not a huge deal, but buying the land was. They, they built and in-house and did both bathrooms. And then they built the north shelter on our side, and then closed it, you know, a couple of years ago. They rebuilt seven green and then many, many tee boxes. You can go on and on what they did, but, but what they've done is they've done that out of, out of their funds and donated to the city because the golf course is the city's. My personal opinion is it's, um, it's in need and, and it's time to upgrade. The golf course is, is considered one of the best. We hold the state match play, the state stroke play, the state two man, it's the three majors. That means the SDGA likes Mitchell. They bring it here, it brings in a lot of income. Since COVID, the green fees, the memberships are way up. Last year, we had a record here, and we are in course to, to blast that. It's subject to weather the last three years. And, you know, it's, it's Jeff Mcatee, and maybe I'll let him finish up here. He is board, board president, and I'll let him touch base on stuff through the, through that. I can have Jeff come up and. I make a motion to approve. Second.
Okay, now discussion.
Now Jeff can come on.
Notice I didn't jump up.
Jeff is board president of Lakeview Golf Course and Cemetery.
Before this process started, I didn't have any gray hairs. Just to touch a little bit on, I don't want to belabor this at all, but this process began well over two years ago where we'd meet as a, as a group and talk about projects at the, at the golf course to try and find funding and, and make tweaks and improvements to the golf course, but nothing would ever get formalized. We'd talk about it and it wouldn't get done. And so what we decided to do is hire a golf course architect to come in and take a look at the course and develop a master plan because we knew we couldn't fund this entire process ourselves. We needed help from, from the city. And working in government in the past, I know a master plan is always good to work off of when you're proposing different projects. And so what we did was we hired Kevin Norby out of Minneapolis to come in, and he held public meetings with our golfers and with the board and, and developed an eight-phase master plan for Lakeview. One of the first things he proposed was probably one of the simplest things, and that was our phase one, is a set of forward tees. We didn't realize that we are the longest forward tee, front tee course in South Dakota. So people that can't hit the ball very far are taking four or five shots to get onto par threes and par fours where they're at a distinct disadvantage. And so phase one was to simply build a set of forward tees and do some tree removal in anticipation of moving forward into phase two and, and down the road. And those forward tees will be starting here very soon after the member guest finished a week ago. The tree removal has already been done or in the process of being done. That's done over the winter time when the course isn't being used. Phase two, which we're talking about now is, and Dan alluded to that, is simply a renovation of the back nine. There hasn't been any major renovations to the golf course in the last 40 years. The, the new nine was built, so that was a, a major accomplishment for, for Lakeview, which cost a, a lot of money back then. But strategically, there hasn't been a lot of big improvements. And working with the architect, we could, well, we're anticipating actually making those changes to some of our old holes to make them more current. The, the technology, the equipment, the golfers have changed in the last 40 years. The course really hasn't. And so we're trying to bring it up to date, more playable, more competitive, and a, and a better all-around course. As far as phase two goes, I had just as much sticker shock as everybody else did when we opened the bids. Due to COVID, through two processes, this, this has increased 30% from when we first started this. And so this is where we're at, at now. One of the other things that was, was talked about is, is funding from the course itself. And I'm, I'm all in support of that, but we operate a little bit differently from like the, the tennis courts, the softball, the baseball diamonds. As a citizen of Mitchell, I can take my kid or grandkids because of the gray hair out to any baseball field, tennis court, anytime I want, as long as there's not a tournament or an activity going on and free of charge, I can go out and throw balls, or they can run bases, they can play tennis, whatever they want for no cost. But each of those groups also have an association that helps support the improvements to those facilities, the baseball association, the tennis association, the softball association. The golf course is its association. You cannot step foot on Lakeview Golf, Golf Course other than the putting and practice green without paying a fee. And in order to come up with this kind of money, we'd either have to raise memberships and green fees to a rate that we're, the average golfer wouldn't be able to afford it, or we'd have to do something else to, to try and gather this. But since it's a city-owned course, I felt all along that the, the benefits from that golf course don't stop at the parking lot. They continue through the city. Anytime we host a tournament or event, there is a benefit to the city. And so I would encourage you to, to support this process as we move forward, and I'd gladly answer any questions if you had them.
Jeff, I've got one question. With, with a, a better course, I mean, it's a beautiful course right now, but I all, I totally appreciate the fact of trying to improve it and, and make it even better. Do you anticipate with the dues that it would go up some, given the fact we're going to have a, a better product in the end?
Yeah, I, I do. And we adjust it accordingly. What we, we try to do is keep up with inflation, and we try to keep competitive with other public courses of similar size and stature around the state. But we also don't want to outprice ourselves for our, our regular people that play every day because they, they can't afford a country club, so to speak.
And Susan's on the phone, and, and she asked me to at least have a visit about the possibility of, even though we are a public course, would there be an opportunity to do some type of fundraising or a little one or something that we can at least the community can get behind and, and help support this project?
You know, we've had those conversations about having a, a tournament, let's say, as a dedicated towards, you know, one a year that goes towards the golf course. When you look at hosting one of those, for example, the, the high end of revenue from that type of activity would be probably between 10 and $15,000, you know? If you had 100 golfers at $200 a head, all going towards the golf course, you still have to account for the time that the tournaments being there has lost wage or lost income from the golf course. So that has to be taken off. And then we have a clubhouse manager that also takes some proceeds from part of his contract is cart rentals and, and those income, which should have to come off of that. So on the high end, you're probably looking at $15,000. We'd be more suited to try a different structure, and I'm open to suggestions. I mean, I really am, because I appreciate the, how much this stuff costs.
Realizing that you have wanted to do some improvements over the last number of years with planning for it, how have rates changed today from three years ago?
I can't give you the exact number. I don't know if Kevin or Jason can. I know we've adjusted, we've been on an alternating program as far as raising memberships one year, greens fees the following year, and kind of leapfrogging those pretty much almost every year throughout the course as far as I can remember. Mostly tied to the cost of inflation, that we, we do a survey of other golf courses and see what other 18-hole municipal golf courses publicly owned are bringing, and we try to be comparable to that as far as that goes.
Further questions?
Where are we at with the payback for the golf carts?
That's a good question. I'm glad that came up.
I think they've got it in this next budget, do they not?
Yeah, there was a request in the 2024 budget that was submitted for the first year repayment.
And, and you are an enterprise fund.
They are.
And you're supposed to be able to support yourself. I thought about this, I did receive some calls on it. If my business couldn't support itself, either I raised my rates or I closed the doors. You say you can't afford to raise your rates. How do you compare to the other golf courses?
As far as rates go or?
Rates.
Pretty similar.
Not a golfer, that's what I'm asking.
You know, it.
It's $2 more for nine holes with a cart every day of the week at Lakeview compared to Wild Oak in town, and it's exponentially more expensive to play there, nine holes with a cart during the weekdays because Wild Oak does discounts during weekday during the summer.
You know, as far as the, the carts go, I think that's been rectified. When that came up, I'm like, well, I talked about that before we even got the carts or what were the terms of our repayment on these. And I don't have a Lakeview Golf Course checkbook that I could just go write a check to City Hall. It's just a matter of setting up the funding and transferring them. So apparently that has now been rectified and that is being handled, so. You know, and in addition to that, as far as the enterprise funds go, this is more of a personal belief. I don't know if the state statutes back this up, but an enterprise fund, as an enterprise fund, we meet our obligations of expenses for, as far as daily operations, salaries, any of those expenses without any issues. Now, there's been times in the past when golf was down that we did fall below that, but very, very few times. What we're looking at is capital improvement projects, and I, I personally think that falls under a different category myself, that it's a, a larger expense, it's a longer-term expense, and it's also an increased asset to the city. If you were to sell that with these improvements, I think you would, you would see a return on that investment versus the day-to-day expenses.
Other questions?
So Jeff, you, you had mentioned you're open to options. So basically you're saying that we would like to do a fundraiser, just a matter of which one would, would probably work the best for you? Would that be a safe assumption? Because that's important to Susan, and I just, I wanted to get that question out for her.
And I'd gladly have her be on the committee to chair that.
Perfect.
Absolutely.
Shouldn't have missed a meeting, Susan.
I'm here, I'm here.
All right. Anything else for Mr. Mcatee? Okay, anybody know who I should address this?
Good evening, Dwight Stadler, Ward four. I got a question. I, I missed it. What was the cost to the city being requested? How much will it cost the city?
So.
680 something. You got the number, Joe?
So there's, the total project cost is 670,300. That would require $180,000 out of the 2024 budget. That puts a 10% contingency on the project.
So to the city, it's 680 or 180?
680, and they have to take 180,000 out of next year's general fund to make it.
We had, we had the original, oh, sorry. We had the original project in our 23 budget that was approved last year, and then the bids came in higher, so higher, and that's what, that's the difference.
Okay. Well, here's where I'm headed with it. And I, forgive me, I've been out of commission for a while due to health reasons, so I'm not up to par on, no pun intended, up to par on everything. But I, I sat there thinking as I was listening to this about, we've got an issue with Lake Mitchell. I know the voting thing is on the agenda tonight. There was a gentleman that spoke about Lake Mitchell, and I, I thought, and I like golfing, but I haven't been in several years, I confess. But the thing is, which has a priority, Lake Mitchell or the golf course? And that's something to think about when you're prioritizing your expenditures. That's my thoughts on it. Now, whether I'm right or wrong, that was what hit me as I'm sitting here listening to this request. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address, counsel? Mr. Rice, you couldn't stay away, could you?
Good evening. My name is Steve Rice, resident Ward one. I had not planned on being here tonight, but I accidentally went golfing yesterday and ran into Jeff, who asked if I would come up and say something. So he's in for it now because he has no idea what I'm going to say. The process, the Golf and Cemetery Board used for the input for the design and changes was professionally done, open to the public, and all comments were heard and considered and resulted in the plan that, that we have. And I think that's important. Dan or somebody talked about when this started, I was the golf liaison from 2012 to 2021, and we were talking about rearrangement and other things on the golf board back in 2014. It didn't really come to fruition until probably almost 2018, 19 timeframe, and then we had COVID. I see our Lakeview Golf Course and really any golf course, including the one that's next on your budget for this golf, as a quality of life issue. In this day and age, when we are trying to attract new talent to Mitchell in the form of filling jobs, I believe this is as important as ever. Lakeview Golf Course is such a unique quality of life amenity that you have all of the surrounding high schools and our local high schools coming to Mitchell to practice and play and even hosting tournaments from out of town. I smile every year when Parkston High School Invitational Golf Tournament is held in Mitchell, South Dakota. What, what a better testament to the golf course and the group out there. I've been a member of Lakeview, Lakeview Golf Course for more than 41 years. My first day working in Mitchell was Tuesday, June 1st, 1982, and at the end of that day, I went to the golf course. What? Who was there? Danny Cadwell was the club manager at the time. The old clubhouse was, I will call it unique and small. The bathrooms were substandard even by 1982 standards. The septic tank was backed up the day I was there, and the women were complaining because they had to go outside in a porta potty. There was really not any parking. The parking that was available was across the road where the amphitheater gravel is now, but it was not gravel, it was just grass, and that's where all the overflow parking was. I believe the parking on the golf course side of the road had about six places. The staff was friendly, and as a new person in town, I felt welcome, and I'm still here, and I think that's something we need to think about. I estimated during those 41-plus years, I look back, I figured I've paid more than $25,000 in membership fees, dues, and cart leases, not including money I've spent on golf balls, golf clubs, food, beverages, and tournament fees. And as a reminder of that, the city sent me a bill for my remaining dues this year since I don't have it taken out of my paycheck any longer. And so there's my, there's my payment to, to the city for, for the rest of the year. The last significant changes we've had and talked about have been 35-plus years ago when the clubhouse location was moved and the driving range was obtained. It's interesting to note that when the current clubhouse was built, you could see the clubhouse and the golf course from Oldman Street. I remember telling my dad, giving him directions to the new clubhouse because he knew where the old one was, told him to drive to 23rd and Oldman and drive north and look to the right, and you'll see the new clubhouse and the golf course on your right. You cannot do that today, and I cannot prove it, but I'd be ventured to say that some of the houses built in that area were built because of the proximity to the golf course and the successful operation. I encourage you to vote in favor of this, and thank you for your time. I encourage you to vote in favor of this, and thank you for your time. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to address this? All right, roll call please.
Dozier.
Aye.
McCardle. Barrington.
Aye.
Baskey.
Aye.
Charks.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Sabers.
Aye.
Goldammer.
Aye.
Dozier. Oh, I got you.
You got him. Okay, six two, motion carries. Action to approve special event permit for South Dakota State Disc Golf Tournament on February, or excuse me, Friday, September twenty-second through Sunday, September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three. Mr. Nelson.
Mr. Mayor and Counsel, Kevin Nelson, Park and Rec Director. The Mitchell Disc Golf Club is requesting a special event permit for South Dakota State Disc Golf Tournament on Friday, September twenty-second through that following Sunday, September twenty-fourth, from seven A M. till six P M. each day. This is a first-time event, it's open to the public, and vendor or participant fees are required and will be held, it will be held at Dry Run Creek Disc Golf Course. As of the time of the writing of this council agenda, there was about a hundred and twenty people signed up for the tournament. We have a cap of a hundred and fifty. Players will park in the parking lots and on the sides of the streets. They're requesting closure of the course from seven A M. to six P M. throughout those three days. The course will be marked with interval intermittent signs along the edge of the course. This is just to keep conflicting participation by by public at the same time as the players that are on the course for the tournament.
Move to approve, second.
Motion by Mr. McCardle, second by Mr. Goldammer. Does that work for you too?
Yep.
Further discussion?
I did have one question. With the vendors that are going to be there, is there permitting required if they're going to sell tobacco products at those locations? If some of those vendors would also have those products sold?
Not sure if you're looking to me for an answer on that one, but any any additional permitting or licensing that they would need? I don't believe it would be a city process for that unless it was a transient or or peddler-type situation. But typically, we don't have those with special events.
Okay, further discussion? Anybody in the audience wish to address this? Roll call please.
Barrington.
Aye.
Baskey.
Aye.
Charks.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Sabers.
Aye.
Goldammer.
Aye.
Dozier.
Aye.
McCardle.
Aye.
Motion carries. Action to approve the following applications for new hire, or excuse me, new vehicle for hire licenses, Congo Club. Mr. Johnson, you want to say anything about these?
I can give a brief rundown, I guess. I'm familiar with the Congo Club application, not the not the other one, but my understanding with this request for ride service license is that the applicant intends essentially just to run rides from the business itself and pick up and drop off patrons of the of the establishment itself, not to run a general ride service license, but because of the type of operation and because it will be in and out of the city and the frequency of that, it still does qualify as a ride service company. So we did request that they obtain the necessary license for that. I believe the applicant is here if there's other questions.
You want to say anything, Mr. Livesay?
Unless there's questions.
Well, entertain a motion.
Fight any concerns?
No, we do not have any concerns.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Smith. Second by Mr. Barrington. Further discussion?
I'll just add, I did also let the applicant know that if if their plans change and they do want to expand that service, since they'd have the license in place, they would be able to offer additional ride services, which the city could probably use.
We definitely could use it. Good luck. Okay, roll call please.
Charks.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Sabers.
Aye.
Goldammer.
Aye.
Dozier. McCardle. Barrington.
Aye.
Baskey.
Aye.
Motion carries. The next one is Richard's Reliable Rides. Again, it's a taxi service. This one will be more conventional, I believe. Entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Goldammer.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Charks. Okay, further discussion? Anybody in the audience?
The applicants here tonight.
Yeah. You want to say anything about your service?